Okay, I'd like to call to order a meeting of Athens City Council. It's Monday, October 17th at 7:30 PM. This is a regular meeting. All members of council are present. I'm the acting president because Bill will be acting mayor. So here we are. I will vote as a member of council but preside at the meeting. So we have a quorum now.
Madam President, I move to amend the agenda to add an executive session to discuss labor negotiations and pending or threatened litigation.
Second.
Any comments on the executive session which will occur after opportunities for citizens to speak? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is amended. Communications, I have none. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Gary?
No reports.
Mayor Bias?
No report.
Kathy?
Yes.
Move adoption at this time of the auditor's financial reports for September 2nd.
Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, so they're adopted now?
Thank you. Yeah, just a quick report. I just wanted to let you know that the tax revisions we've talked about have been sent to the law director's office for review, so we should be getting those back any time. And I'll keep you posted on that.
Those, that would be the three reports we might have. Now, we're going to have ordinances for third reading. Oh-8105, an ordinance vacating approximately 8107 acre of East Union Street from University Terrace to Stewart Street to Ohio University. Councilmember Sands.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to move to table this ordinance.
Second.
Part of the agreement required to satisfy the conditions for this ordinance is an agreement guaranteeing access to the rear of the Alpha Gamma Delta sorority property. And at this time, Ohio University and the sorority have not completed that agreement.
Okay, any other comments on the tabling of Oh-8105? Audience? Okay. All in favor of tabling ordinance Oh-8105, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh-8105 is tabled. Oh-8905, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through June 30th, 2006. Councilmember Tamke.
Madam President, move to adopt Oh-8905.
Second.
It's, this is the annual ordinance for the Public Defender's Office. It's on the state fiscal year, which is why the dates are as they are. The amount here is $122,151, represents about a 10% increase in this amount of this contract from last fiscal year.
Any other comments on Oh-8905? Audience, none. All in favor of, it's been moved and seconded and we're now Oh-8105? All those in favor of Oh-8905, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh-8905 passes.
Thank you.
Seven, zero. Oh-9105, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for the extension of city water services beyond the corporate limits on Peach Ridge Road and authorizing the installation of the TAP, of ATAP. I introduce the ordinance and I would like to move to adopt Oh-9105.
Second.
Oh-9105 follows a procedure we established perhaps five years ago that says that if we are, we have a line going by a residence, a single-family residence, and there's no other alternative for water, that we will provide water with an additional charge. And so we have to have a series of findings concerning that. And especially, we have to have adequate pressure in the line so an additional tap will not degrade the existing service in the area. We found those to be the case, and that's why Oh-9105 is on the agenda. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of Oh-9105, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-9205, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations to Michael and Connie Moritz for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Sands.
Madam President, I reckon, I'm, I move that we approve Oh-9205.
Second.
Give us a chance.
This request for a lot split comes to us from the Athens County Regional Planning Commission through the Athens City Planning Commission with several requests for variances and conditions attached. It's asking for a variance from the minimum lot frontage of 90 feet, a variance from requirement that parcels front along an existing public street, and some conditions about notification that this would be the only, the last lot split allowed in this area. A road maintenance agreement has been set up, and in this private semi-public road, utility easements have been established for future utilities if they come along.
Other comments on Oh-9205? Hearing none. All those in favor of Oh-9205, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-9305, an ordinance authorizing construction of a new restroom facility at South Side Park. Councilmember Patterson.
Madam President, I move for adoption of Oh-9305.
Second.
Madam President, this is a, to enter into bids and then to establish a contract for the design and construction of restroom facilities at the South Side Park. And it's for up to $60,000 out of capital improvements. Twenty, approximately $21,000 of that comes back to us in a nature works grant.
Other comments on Oh-9305? Paul.
If I remember, this is a different location than present.
Right.
Set up, and it's closer to Richland, is that, or is it further away? I forget.
It's close to the same spot, I believe, but it's just a better facility.
Yes.
Well, I have a question for you, Carol. I've been reading in the newspaper about the redevelopments on the rivers and potentially putting a building that goes up the side. This won't be anywhere near that, will it?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, because there was, it's too far away? Okay. Any other comments on Oh-9305? Okay, audience, none. All those in favor of Oh-9305, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's all get in the chorus. The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-9405, an ordinance approving the revised solid waste management plan of the Athens Hawking Solid Waste District. Introduced by Councilmember Bain, I move adoption of Oh-9405.
Second.
Oh-9405 makes up some remedies, some issues that the EPA had with our district's solid waste management plan concerning especially composting and some other components of that. And so, we hope that this will take us forward for a year or two until we have to revise the plan one more time. Any other comments on Oh-9405? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing Oh-9405, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-1005, an ordinance authorizing funds for engineering of a water line and pump station for the Columbus Road Water Project Number 218. Introduced by Councilmember Bain, I move adoption of Oh-10105.
Second.
Oh-10105 is part of a multi-ordinance upgrade of the infrastructure in the vicinity of Columbus Road. We had the great misfortune of losing a part of a sewer line or having a sewer line problem in that area, so we've taken advantage of it and are doing quite a bit of infrastructure work in that area. And the water line and pump station, partially funded by grants, will take, will be done by ordinance Oh-10105. Any other comments? Paul.
So, if I remember, what's the total, $120,000, $120,000 or more?
Oh, it's gonna be more than that.
That's just the design.
That's 10 years ago. Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, we will have, once we have the engineers' estimates, we'll have a better idea of what it is, but it'll be a lot probably. Oh-10205, an ordinance authorized, oh, I forgot to move. Okay, I'm getting tired, you can tell. All right, all those in favor of Oh-10105, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-10205, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to borrow up to $75,000 for the Columbus Road Sewer Project and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Bain, who moves adoption of Oh-10205.
Second.
All right. This ordinance is going to borrow money, or is authorizing the auditor to borrow money to do the design work for the Columbus Road Sewer Project. It will eventually be paid in large measure by FEMA, which is a great benefit to us. But we're going to see more about increasing sewer rates and so on in response to this sewer line disaster we had last year in January. So, anybody else to comment in Oh-10205? All those in favor of Oh-10205, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Oh-10305, an ordinance authorizing engineering of a gravity sewer lift station and force main for the Columbus Road Sewer Project. Number 218. Introduced by Councilmember Bain, move adoption of Oh-10305.
Second.
Oh-10305 will continue the process we've talked about with Oh-101, Oh-2. It's part of the larger infrastructural improvement process in the Columbus Road area. Any other comments from my colleagues on council? Okay, all those in favor of passing Oh-10305, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero. Okay. Ordinances for second reading. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to purchase two marked police cruisers. Oh-9805, an ordinance granting a variance from Athens City subdivision regulations for property located on Second Street owned by James Cassell's two, to allow a minor lot split.
Nancy?
Yeah.
I did get some feedback on this, actually, two different occasions. One being concerned about driveways going in and out of this. I guess they're thinking in terms of curb cuts in the eventual future of this lot. The other one being that this would increase the density in our one zone by splitting this lot. I think the traffic thing is because they look at, many people look at Second and Central as the western belt for the city, and that they're worrying about if this ends up to be a back-out situation for the driveway. Again, that's really not our purview in one sense, but the other idea is just to put in a record that the Service Safety Director will be aware of this whenever he does a curb cut, I guess.
And the sidewalk is stepped?
Yeah, it is. Actually, it's stepped a little bit higher up, I think. I don't think it starts till the end of this lot.
That was one of my concerns earlier. Anybody else on that? Okay, so it's a duly noted. There were two issues brought up. All right, yeah, Dale.
May I ask what happened to 9705? Did we, I noticed it was read for the second time on the 11th. Did we pass it under suspension on the 11th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just the numbers are skipping and I had.
We don't want to, yeah, we.
Okay.
Don't want anything falling through the cracks.
Thank you.
Oh-9905, an ordinance amending ordinance Oh-6505 to increase the authorized expenditure for renovation of the Arts West Community Facility, Project 216. Oh-1005, an ordinance amending the City Code Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04, Bending, Pedaling, and Soliciting. Oh-10405, an ordinance amending the 2005 Appropriation Ordinance. If anybody wants to flag me down, I can.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
I thought maybe.
No.
We're okay?
I don't think so, we're good.
Oh-10505, an ordinance authorizing Service Safety Director to advertise, accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for scoreboards and other donations to be used at recreation facilities in exchange for vending rates. Councilmember Patterson.
Madam President, I move to suspend the rules for 10505.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A reason for a suspension?
The reason for a suspension is because the previous contract expired on the 14th of October and to expedite the execution of the new contract.
Okay, so, any other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on Oh-10505, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The rules are suspended, the vote was six, one.
I would note that without an emergency, it's still gonna be 30 days.
Right, I knew that, yeah.
Okay.
Madam President, I move for adoption of 10505.
Second.
This is to advertise and accept bids for a contract with the Community Center to donate money for scoreboards, to sponsor the scoreboards at the West Ballparks, the Westgate Street Ballparks, the Community Center, and to sponsor some events at both of those places as well as Arts West. It's a four-year contract with an option to renew for an additional three years, and the contract value is approximately $70,000 over four years. And that's money coming to us, it's not going away from us.
And you mentioned the juice and water before, so you.
Right, the, that, there is an agreement that juice and water will be supplied as well as carbonated beverage juice.
Okay. Other comments on Oh-10505? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The vote is six, one. Ordinances for first reading, Oh-10605, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for structural repairs of the Columbus Road Fire Station. Councilmember Tamke.
Madam President, move we would consider Oh-10605 under suspension.
Second.
Reason for suspension, please.
Yes, back in, back in October, we passed an ordinance Oh-8405 that authorized an expenditure, a bidding, a bid process, an expenditure of $135,000 to repair the Columbus Road Fire Station. There were no bidders under that process. The, the issue at this point, and the language is, is purposeful, real and present emergency, I'm advised that the way this repair needs to be done is that fire trucks cannot stay in the station while the fire, while this repair is being done. These are pumper trucks, which can't stay outside once the weather gets below freezing. And so we need to get this work done right now, and we don't want to wait till spring because we've, we've been sort of fussing with this for a while. So, that's the reason, this is an ex, this is not a common thing to do, but this is a thing that we would, we do when we do have no bidders or bidders that are unacceptable to us. And so that's what this ordinance does, and that's why we need to suspend.
Any other comments on suspension? Very well done. All those in favor of suspending the rules on Oh-10605, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Move adoption of Oh-10605.
Second.
Okay, even though it's not mentioned in here, the dollar amount of this commitment is $135,000. We had made this previously, so this was, this was done back in October, and so the budgetary impact of this was recognized at that point. What this ordinance does is allow us to proceed outside the regular bidding process because of the situation that I talked about under the suspension discussion, yeah.
Dale, if we didn't have any bidders for the contract, does that mean that we need for more money later? Was it out of range, or just no interest?
I don't know, I don't have details on that. I can, I mean, I guess we can ask the mayor when, upon his return to sort of tell us what happened. I'm not gonna ask the mayor pro tem, because I don't think that's fair.
I'm aware that it was concerned about how shaky it could be.
Well, yeah, there's some, I think there's gonna be a partition wall and some, and some foundation work done on it. And it's anticipated that the original dollar amount, we can get the work done for that. So, I think we're in good shape here. Actually, kind of lucky on this one.
Good. Could you clarify when we had the original ordinance, please?
It was October.
2004?
We passed it on, no, we passed it October 3rd, '05.
Okay.
Yeah, now, I don't know, we could have, we could have had a discussion back in February, I think we were talking about where we, in the first of, first of the year. But we finally, I mean, I think Debbie, Debbie sponsored the October ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
8405.
Yeah, Oh-8405.
All right. So, we have the rules suspended on Oh-10605, and now let's have the question. There are no more comments? All those in favor of Oh-10605, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes, seven, zero.
Thank you.
All right, number seven on the agenda is announcements and other business. Announcements first, any announcements? Debbie?
I promised Leslie that I would announce that there's a public market presentation and forum on Wednesday from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Athens Community Center. And it's a discussion about possible expansion of the farmer's market. There's a person coming in to present who helps with public market development around the country. And I think the artist's market also is, is a part of that presentation.
And so, the public is invited?
Invite people to come and participate.
Okay, good. Any other announcements?
Madam President, I'm sorry.
That's okay, jump in, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to schedule a planning and development committee meeting for next Monday, the October 31st.
It's two.
You wish.
Excuse me?
It's two weeks away.
October 24th.
October 24th, okay.
I can't make it on the 24th.
Oh, okay, that's why I'm so confused. Okay, never, well, I still need to do it on the.
Probably have to do it both days, actually, get right down to it.
Let's do it on the 24th, and then we'll see if we need to talk about it, okay.
I can't be there on the 24th.
Oh, so he, it will be Halloween, then?
Yeah.
We'll do it both, yeah, okay. So we'll have our meeting, and then we'll ask Gary on the 31st for his, okay. So we'll have, we can give him what we have, give him a chance to go over it so we don't have him pulled with it. Any other meetings on, I bet there's gonna be a finance meeting.
Yes, there is. We'll continue budget discussions, and I imagine if the income, if the income tax modification ordinances are ready for us to take a look at, well, if they're ready, we can take a look at those. We've seen this before, but it's just seeing the final form of them. There's no doubt when the mayor returns, he'll add some transactional items to that agenda as well.
Okay, anybody else? Debbie?
No promises on that one either.
No promises on that one either, okay, all right.
Madam President, I have a recommendation here from the mayor regarding appointments to the Disabilities Commission. I would like to move that we appoint Ms. Priscilla Bowen to the unexpired term, which was held by Nancy Nesbit, which will run through May 31st, 2006, and that we also appoint the following three people to current three-year terms that will run through May 31st, 2008. Those people are Tony Sylvester, Catherine Fahey, and Scott Dennis.
Okay. Any questions about this? Do we have a second, first of all?
Second.
Okay, so we have moved and seconded nominations, and there are no people currently in those positions that will be replaced, is that correct?
Right, these are three-year terms that, when the commission was begun, they were set up so they'd be staggered. So, these three people are coming into the terms that were open, and then there was one member who had to resign early, so we're replacing that person.
Okay. So, any other comments on these nominations to the Disability Commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven, zero is the vote on that one. Any other announcements or other business for the 24th or 31st meetings? Okay, last item on our agenda is opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. I suspect that there are quite a few people here who would like to talk about the cable contract, and so I would like you to follow these rules, which are our rules. That you would get up and give your name and address, please, and then proceed to state your opinion, or whatever you care to, care to state, within a three-minute timeframe. And we will not take questions. If you would like to have questions, you certainly may put them in writing, and we could put them, maybe a meeting on the agenda later on, but basically, that's the, those are our rules. And I'll be watching you on the clock up there for three minutes, plus or minus. I won't stop you mid-sentence, but some people have a tendency to go on, other people are real succinct, so go for succinct, because we probably, we have an executive session after this, and I guess that the, the contract has been let, and I don't, and I think you can come and talk to us, but anyway, I'll stop there. So, opportunity for citizens to speak, three minutes, name and address, please. Whoever's speaking first, get up there and let's go, let's hear it.
Ms. Nancy, formal as always, greetings, council. My name's Chris Cruz, I live at 8 Patton Street, and I am the board president for public access. I'll try to be succinct as possible. Three main concerns I'd like to bring to council, simply so you're aware of them, and this is both from public access perspective and a public perspective. The first one has to do with the granting and the requirements for the RFP in this contract. I've got a copy of the city contract, second or third page, and it specifically states and cites ordinance 08996 that City Council passed, that bidders shall possess at a minimum the following, and then there's a quote, says, "Be a legal entity with, that has voting membership." And it's our contention that, in fact, Athens Community Television is not and was not a legal entity at the time this contract was awarded, and therefore did not meet the basic requirements the city had, and that's a big concern for us. Second point has to deal with the Higher Revised Code and Ethics Laws in the state of Ohio. Section 29, 21.42, which is in the Ethics Higher Revised Code, I have a copy here, specifically under section 29, 21.42A3, it states that during the term of office or within one year thereafter, occupying any position of profit in the prosecution of a public contract authorized by him being a public official or legislative body, commission or board of which he was a member, which would be the city, as someone who is an employee of the government channel, which is part of the city, is prohibited by the Ohio Ethics Law. And there's two other points in here that are also of concern to us about, did the city violate the Ohio Ethics Code in awarding this contract to? violate the Ohio Ethics Code in awarding this contract to an employee of the city? That's something else we would like to raise. And the final one has to do with more of a political angle, which is in the recent press coverage, ACT representative has sort of explained and expounded on how they're going to meet the requirements of the contract, and exceptions or things they would change based on a presentation we gave last week. And it's our contention that the city should have awarded this contract based on the merits at the time, not having explanations and expansions on the contract after it was already awarded, but unfairly biases the party. So, those are three issues I'd like to bring to council's attention. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, my name's Richard Sams, and I live on Eden Place in Athens, lifelong resident, and I'm also the Executive Director of the Athens Cable Access Center, also known as Public Access Twenty-three. I want to swing completely the other direction that Chris was, was talking or going with, and talk a little bit about other expenses which I'm not sure were considered, and I maybe asked everyone here to maybe question some of those, some of those things, too. And to rewind a little bit, technologies have changed in Athens, and we're currently operating on the same technology we've operated on in the last couple of years. And so, we were considering a move to Columbus Road a couple of years ago, and we did for a short while. We were going to do a one-hundred percent move, but we're told at the time it would cost between fifty to seventy thousand dollars for AMAC to make that move from Court Street, from Fifty South Court Street. That would be an expense that either AMAC picked up or the city of Athens picked up, but not an expense that Time Warner was willing to pick up at that time. And my question that I think everyone should be asking is, is this going to be true if someone were to move, say, to, you know, Richland Avenue, or down the street from Would the problems that we were presented with still exist? Since the technology hasn't changed, I'm gonna say that those, those technical limitations are still there. Other severe technical limitations exist in our playback system, and other aging equipment that we currently have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. An attempt to move that equipment, especially the playback system, from its present location would probably destroy it, it's so old and frail. So, a decent playback system, probably one such as the government channel has, probably costs between twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. And at the very minimum, a simple playback system could be purchased for around five thousand dollars. So, I'm not sure that these expenses were really questioned when the bid was awarded to Athens Community Television. Those issues keep us at Fifty South Court Street, and those issues keep us using archaic equipment. We haven't found a solution to either one of those issues yet, but we've made alternative accommodations for ADA issues and other such issues because we were forced to, and we still are forced to. So, I just want to make sure that everyone's asking the same questions that I'm asking right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leo McFicker, I'm also an Athens Cable Access Center employee, I live at sixteen and a half Hanlon. I'm just going to mention some statistics real quick, in that forty-five people have been trained this year, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine equipment rentals have been made this year, five-hundred-and-eighty-three shows have been turned in this year from one-hundred-and-twelve different producers, and that doesn't include, that's just who signs off on the show that gets turned in. Every show might have between one and ten people working on it, so you can see that there are a lot of different people using our facility. And two-hundred-and-forty-three different people have signed in to our office. In addition to that, in supporting the job that we do, we sent around a little show of support in, by the way, of getting signatures. We only started getting these signatures this past Wednesday and until today, and we got over six hundred. And so, I was just gonna present those, and on the top it says that people, by signing it, are voicing their support for us and keeping cable access operating the way it has been for almost fifteen years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other people? Any others?
My name is Terry Boyer, I'm a board member of the Athens Media Access Center. I live at two forty-five East State Street here in Athens. I just want to, there's been a lot of talk in the newspapers about ADA compliance of our facility. As Richard mentioned earlier, we attempted to move our facility to a ground floor location several years ago, and flat out were not able to for financial reasons. You know, even during that time and since then, we have made arrangements with the public library systems here in Athens, and actually throughout the Athens County, that if someone needs to use a, as a studio setup or as a show, or even just to arrange to pick up or drop off equipment, to not only use the library facilities to do that, but also people can call up our station and say, "I'm gonna come by your station at two o'clock to pick up this equipment." We take it down to their car, we take it down to wherever they are, and make sure they get the equipment they need to do the shows. You know, we have laptop computers that do mobile editing, so if someone wants to sit at home and edit a show, they may do that. You know, we understand our, our current facilities are on a third floor, you know, that right now is beyond our control, but it is no, it's not anything more than other facilities throughout Athens who are also on, that are also not ADA compliant. You know, ADA law requires you to make your best effort to make yourself available to those who need you. We've done that. To have comments in the newspapers repeatedly about how we're not ADA compliant is absolutely false. That's all I'd like to say.
Thanks, Terry. Anyone else?
My name's Ruth Bradley, I live at fifty-eight hundred State Route Six Eighty-One in New Marshfield, Ohio, and I'm a board member of Access. And what's concerning to me about this potential change is that there's a very strong web of connections and partnerships between the present administration of public access and a lot of community groups out there. Churches, after-school programs, film festivals, of which I'm the director, and we all work together, and those partnerships have been carefully nurtured and developed over the years. The, the contract of ACT suggests that the, the working hours is gonna be nine to five Monday through Friday, and there's an awful lot of the community groups now that use Access who won't be able to, to participate at those particular hours. The other thing that they've said in their new contract is that there would be more substantial training and different kinds of equipment, and it just, roadblocks are being put up in, in front of community members to dissuade them from expressing their public and community points of view, as opposed to the nurturing of partnerships that have been going on for a decade. So, that's my concern about this particular issue. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Any other comments? All right, I'd like to state for the record that once we pass an ordinance saying that we've authorized the administration to enter into a contract, we've passed it, so I don't know that we possess remedies, and I think you mostly know that. Okay, I see at least one head nodding, okay. So having said that, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session. We will have no additional business at the end of that time.
Move, we go into executive session?
Oh, the stating the purpose, contract negotiations, and potential litigation. Thank you.
For contract negotiations and potential litigation, yes.
Two separate things, right?
To include.
Including the mayor.
Oh.
The auditor, is, are you necessary? And Gary?
All right.
And the rest of council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Tankey.
Aye.
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 Okay, all seven of us, say aye.
Aye.
And we will reconvene in five minutes, so let's have the room cleared at that point.